Order would start with Pledge of Allegiance if you're able to stand and appreciate it.
The Pledge of Allegiance is from the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call order roll call started on my right.
Councilperson Jeff.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Councilperson Craig Anderson.
Councilperson Jeremiah Olgin.
Approval of tonight's agenda.
Nothing additional from staff.
A motion to approve, we got a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Approval of council meeting minutes of October twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. Motion to approve.
So, I'll second.
Motion is a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Update is financing budget. The accounts table. The additional listings. Any questions on that? We have a motion on financing budget? Motion to approve with a second?
Second.
You got a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Takes us to what we're all here for, motions of general business. The first item under motions of general business tonight is public hearing. To set adopting assessments for the two thousand nineteen CIP at Third Avenue, Fourth Avenue, Fifth Street Southeast. Right now we're in a regular meeting, but I'm going to open a public hearing tonight. So I'll close the regular meeting. Public hearing is now open. Public hearing is being held tonight, November twelfth, two thousand nineteen, to receive comments on the proposed special assessments for the street and utility CIP improvements of two thousand nineteen for Third Avenue Southeast, Fourth Avenue Southeast, and Fifth Street Southeast. So this whole procedure will take a little bit before we get to the department. You guys can ask questions and find out what's going on, but by asking Director Carla, she's got some information she wants to relay to you about how this whole thing works. Plus, before I close the public hearing, if any of you are wanting to appeal, you're going to carry on and appeal your assessments. I'll leave written notice from you before I close the public hearing. You just gotta either give me or Bill a piece of paper says you're gonna appeal or whatever. So I just want you to know that and remind you of that a couple times during the meeting before the closing. So Carla, do you wanna go over there?
So the purpose of this hearing is to consider questions and objections to the proposed special assessments for the public for the improvements on Third Avenue Southeast, Fourth Avenue Southeast, and Fifth Street Southeast. And to receive a signed written notification of the appeal to assessment amount. This must be done by closing the public hearing tonight. The assessment procedure, the resolution for preparation of feasibility report was done in May twenty-second, two thousand eighteen. Resolution calling hearing, July tenth, two thousand eighteen. Mailed notice, July thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. Published notice, published notice hearing in this report was done on July twenty-fourth and July thirty-first of two thousand eighteen. The public hearing on improvement was August fifteenth, two thousand eighteen. Resolution ordering improvements and preparation of plans was August fifteenth, two thousand eighteen. Resolution approving plans for ordering advertisement of bids was done on February twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen. The assessment hearing, or the assessment procedure, the opening bid was done on April fourth, two thousand nineteen. Resolution receiving bids and awarding contract, May sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. Resolution declaring cost to be assessed, October eighth, two thousand nineteen. Resolution calling assessment hearing, October eighth, two thousand nineteen. The published notice of public hearing in this report was done on both October fifteenth and October twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. The mailing of the public notices were done on October fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. The public hearing is on November, is tonight, November twelfth, two thousand nineteen. This is a copy of the hearing notice that was mailed to you. And the assessment calculations. Based on the current assessment policy that was amended in two thousand ten, twenty-five percent of the reconstruction of the street, based on a normal residential street, fifty percent of the water connection, fifty percent of the sewer connection. This is also based on linear footage, except corner lots, which is, are based on the smaller side, the curb lots, which are based on the property line. The total cost was just under two million dollars with an accessible amount of three hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-eight cents. The cost per linear foot, we had the engineering estimates come in at sixty-one dollars and ninety-one cents. Water connection was nineteen hundred dollars, sewer connection was fifteen hundred dollars. And you can see the final cost, the street came in per linear foot at sixty-five dollars and seventy-four cents. The water connection came in lower at twelve hundred dollars, and the sewer connection was also lower at twelve hundred dollars. Payment of assessment, payment could be made in thirty days from the adoption, interest free, partial payments are allowed within this time period. After December twelfth, all unpaid assessments will be placed on the property tax roll for ten years and at interest rate of three point eight four percent. Interest for the first year is calculated from today's date through December thirty-first. And just a note to all of you, the interest rate that was given on the letters that went out were at four point five percent, which was actually last year's rate. And our actual interest rate for this year is three point eight four percent. There was new charts that were handed out as you came in the door, and if you came in after that, you can see us afterwards and we will go ahead and give those to you, or we will mail out to the one people who are not here. Once the assessment is placed on the property tax, there are no rule for partial payments on that. The appeal process. The first step is to present a signed written objection to the mayor or the city administrator before the closing of tonight's hearing. The second step is to serve notice to the mayor or the administrator within thirty days after the adoption of the assessments. Then filing notice with the district court within ten days after serving the mayor or city administrator. All objections not received by the closing of the assessment hearing tonight are waived under section four twenty-nine dot zero six one of the Minnesota statutes unless failure failure to object is due to a reasonable cause. Differrment of assessments, the application procedure has been set forth by the city resolution two thousand five dash thirty-two. Termination of deferred assessment is with sale of property, death of owner, non-homesteaded property, and no hardship. For the eligibility, sixty-five years of age or older or totally and permanently disabled as determined by the Social Security Administration. Owner of the property must be homesteaded, must meet income thresholds as established by most recent U.S. Census Bureau threshold. Determination will be based on the most recent federal filing tax form.
You done Carla?
I'm done.
Alright, once again, I'll remind you if you wanna give written notice, you can do it again now if you'd like. Otherwise, we're gonna open it up to the public now, as you're hearing, if you have questions or concerns, now's the time to let us know. But the only thing I will ask you is, we really like your name and address for our record if it's so we have it on our address. Anyone has a question or a concern or would like to ask something?
And sod, is there a recourse if this doesn't?
No, if you don't give us your name and address.
I just jimmy it at three seventeen Fifth Streets Southeast.
This will be sod's included under the warranty too, correct?
So how long is that warranty just?
We have a two-year warranty, and that actually starts, or gets kicked into place after we finalize the project, so you're all aware there will be another lift of asphalt that gets put on in the spring. And after that is done, plus any warranty work we walk through and see before we accept the final project, so any corrections to cracked panels or drainage concerns, anything that is out there that we put onto the punch list that needs to be addressed next spring, once all of that is done, we finalize the project with the contractor, pay the final payment, and then we have two years of a warranty on top of that.
The thirty days, they are responsible for watering in thirty days in the spring, because it was so late, it was kind of a dormant sodding. And last year we had the same scenario, and it turned out fantastic, we never even had to water it. And it was some of the best sod we've had take under those circumstances. But they'll be responsible for thirty days if time kicks in in the spring to give the sod to take a foot. At that point, the sod becomes the homeowner's to water if they want to, once it is taken over.
We, we will check for some settling though, 'cause we did get a couple calls that a couple yards had already some existing settling that started right away, or there was some longs. So we'll just have to take a look at it. Just so you know the history, the subcontractor that had committed to Elcor was a no-show. So they had to juggle some of that work around themselves, and they did try to get it all in, but we might see a couple things that they'll have to come back and address. Sometimes around water services, you'll see some settling, and either our city staff has helped or the contractors have helped.
So how they what, just off the street?
They'll have a truck.
My driveway is pretty much as old as mine after they did it the first time.
As far as watering?
Yeah.
You know, let us know, that's gonna be their responsibility if it does that. And if people don't let us know, we'll work our best with the contractors, but people gotta let us know.
Steve later spiked fourteen fourth Avenue Southeast. With that showing, I had a big dip in after they put the sod down. Skinny gonna look at it, he said he'd probably fix it next spring, but Skin's probably gonna retire it this year or something.
We have warranty, we hold their, we hold payment from them, so we can hold them to coming back to fix that stuff. The nice thing about dormant sodding is, it's giving it time to settle, and then in the spring, they can roll the sod back, level those areas out, and roll the sod back down.
So do we have to contact you in the spring then?
Let us know. And we're gonna be doing a walkthrough in the spring, so we'll see it ourselves also.
But if you do have a specific concern, if you let us know around May, time period, we will add it to that punch list.
Question. Dave Smith, five twelve, with the Southeast. In regards to that payment, as you were just explaining, you have to pay, you have thirty days to, if you wanna make two payments, three payments, and after that thirty day, that it goes on the tax roll right away, there's no, you can't pay it off and make a regular loan, say five years from now, you wanna just?
You can, you can pay off, you can pay off that full balance, but you have to do it through the county through your taxes.
Okay, okay. So basically just go to the county on the south hall?
Correct.
Thank you.
One thing I wanna add is, Elcor has been a very reputable company around here, and the nice thing is, there's been longevity there. And as far as getting them to come back and do work, I don't foresee any problems with that. I know there are spots that there's broken concrete already, happens every year on these projects. In the spring, they will be back in there and they will get all that taken care of. So I, I mean, just to kind of put some people at ease, 'cause it seems like there's some worry about people showing up to do that. I don't think we'll run into any issues with that, but we do hold money back to get them back in to do that.
What do we make the checks out to?
Do you use credit card?
No.
Yeah.
To city of store.
City of store.
Yeah.
Is there a reason why you can't use your credit card?
We're not set up to take credit card payments yet, except through provider bills. That's something we're gonna be looking at and talking to council though, for the first of the year.
Can't do it in one month? Because you might as well get credit card on your credit cards, so you can make that full payment in one. I wonder if they could do that through the county?
To make your tax statement payment, you'd have to probably wait for the first one to come out. You know, just do a partial right now, and then when your first state statement comes out, 'cause I think the county is to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
And then utilize it through them when next year's statement's come.
When is that first, first year of interest?
It'll be listed on your?
Although I mean, if you're gonna make a partial payment to do, you're gonna wait till it comes out, you're gonna get nailed for some sort of interest, right? It'll always be the interest.
Yeah, and it's state law, that's, that's, that's those guidelines, so.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Richard Mummelord, five twenty-fourth Avenue. I just wanna say, I thought Elcor did excellent, police in front of my place, did an excellent job professionally, and especially communicating with the workers. I just like to pass that along to them.
We appreciate that, and we'll see to it that they get that, those comments to them.
Any other comments, concerns, there you go.
Oh, concern. Yeah, Ken Munson, four twenty-one, fourth.
Thank you.
And the concern is about this water and sewer connection. How is it that that was not included in the original proposal? Did they not intend to connect up the water and sewer?
It wasn't the original proposal. I've never seen one yet, when it wasn't the original.
So why is it there now is an additional charge that I was not told about before now?
Oh, that charge was always in there. Did the rest, you get a, when the proposal came out, did you have a sewer and water connection on it?
I don't recall seeing any.
Well, it'd have to be the very first time anybody ever got missed, 'cause I know they're always in there, it's actually lower than all the, Southside's lower than what it was.
Yeah, it, even, even what you're saying, I'm paying fifty percent of it, to me that's extremely high.
It's higher every year.
All we're talking about is a short piece of pipe and a bell. And you're gonna pay twelve hundred dollars for a few feet of pipe and a bell.
I paid it too, we've all been, everybody sitting under his assessment.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking that somebody certainly should have had a conversation with the contractor about that price.
I'm pretty sure that was conversation's hell, wasn't it?
Came in lower than the tax dues.
If you'd have given me the option to do it myself, I would have done it.
So it's not just a bell and a short piece of pipe, it's actually from the main all the way to the right away, and it's putting that Y in on the main too. Stopping work, changing directions, getting that stuff done, making temporary connections. There's more to it than just a piece of pipe.
But there's, the charge is the same whether the pipe had to go under the street or just from the curb to the, to the bell?
Right, because it is, we bid services based on averages for these services, so everybody is treated fairly. So it doesn't matter if the main is on the opposite side of the street from you, or right in your front yard with dealing with water, or if the sanitary cuts a different line and you have a longer service. Everybody is treated equally on that service rate, so. And that's the policy and how the city has done it for many years now.
How about the water main service, extraordinary, we still got natural flow of the street. There's no storm drains beyond this part. We still use a natural flow, water running down the road, running, running, what's to run?
There is quite more storm sewer in this project than was before. So storm sewer design is based off of what is being captured and to keep lanes open during a ten-year event. And so those calculations, we do not collect water every house or, or any. But we do collect a whole street that has no storm drains, it's all natural flow.
It's not my house, it's everybody else up the street.
So this street has a high point in it?
I understand that too, I've lived there for fifty years, I can tell you what the ground is like, okay? And what the water does, I know what the road, how much it shifted over the years, and I can tell you what's happened in the past with the water. And that road is running shit over time. And whether it was the water going then, or it does. You know, I'm just saying, there's no storm drains, there's no issue, none was put in.
And none was native, native standards?
Right, what you're saying today, that you now realize that contour of the land has been, well, since it didn't cross it back in the T eight, and since then it's shifted a lot. I know, I've lived there, I've seen the problems, I've seen what they did. That's my concern, my concern is what is trying to be, my lifetime now will probably be defined. But sooner or later, something's gonna shift, and we may have a problem with it. You know, I just think that when they did this project, if everybody has to pay the same price, then we should have on Fifth Street got some kind of storm cleared through, we know the torque of the water, and some kind of drains besides running down the street.
Well, it's also a responsibility to use the city's taxpayer money feasibly and not just to put in structures.
Taxpayers don't pay for this, I'm a taxpayer.
You'd have been paying a lot more.
You'd be paying more.
I know, I realize that, but I'm just saying, there is no storm question on Fifth Street. It's all natural flow, the same as it was before this project even started. So as far as I'm concerned, Fifth Street, from that point you gain nothing. All we did is got a narrow street with three lanes of traffic, considering it's four, and I just don't see like everybody got treated equally. I don't see it.
Well, it's all done by engineering standards and anything else, that's all we can tell you. You can give me a written appeal if you wanna appeal your assessments.
No, I'm gonna appeal, but I don't have a piece of paper to do it.
You can write it on the back end of papers you got set in front of you. And write it up.
I don't want you to.
No, you can take one other pieces you got.
All I need is a pen.
Mr. Munson, the panel?
Anyhow, to, to follow up on my comment, not too long ago, I had a well pulled up and a hundred feet of pipe and a submersible pump put in there for less money than you're charging me here. I, I don't understand where, where that money's going.
There that's what your appeal is, sign in. Any other questions or discussion, there you go.
I'm with Lonnie in three sixteen Fifth Street, who sets the interest rate?
We gotta reset.
Who sets it?
It's a percent over what we borrow for.
So it can fluctuate from year to year. We did go out for bids on bonds, the best bid came in at two point eight four percent. And the city, all these years, has always charged one percent over.
So what's that one percent go to?
That's for the city costs that are involved in putting that bond worth together.
And there are questions, concerns?
Couple of questions, Abe Lotpolis, four nineteen, fourth. Originally, it was brought up about adding a light to the north towards Fourth Street on the western east side, because it's so dark down in that area. Is, why wasn't anything addressed by your wonderful engineer?
That would be people's call, take care of the lights. Have we talked to people on that? We still could talk to them, you'd like put in there yet.
Yeah.
Jimmy, you see, you can't. And look.
No, I mean, is it near your, I mean, is it near your property?
To the north. That whole section is all real dark.
What area I give you?
Which corner again?
Fourth Avenue, four nineteen, Fourth Avenue to Fourth Street, it's dark. I'm the one that has the light at the end of my driveway. That's the only light on that whole block, tell you it's down by Dave Schmidt's. Should you bring this up? Yes, first meeting.
The depth checker knows, but we can still have people's take a look at it, we still have a light for it.
Appreciate it, because you came out that night, and you looked at it, and you even said it was dark.
My most darkest street I live on up there, we have one on the whole two blocks, I know what you're saying.
It's my understanding that there was in your bid proposal a fabric to go below on the street to improve the feasibility and the longevity of the road?
I don't know.
So we do include a bid item for geotextile fabric to go under portions of the street that is only used when we do our roll test, and the material that is under what we've cut. So I've cut it out of what we've tried to prep and make hard for to hold the street on before we put all of our layers of rock and sand on there. If we do a roll test and it seems too soft, one of the measures, one of the items we have for our toolbox to repair that is to utilize a geotextile fabric, plus sometimes instances, we take more material out and replace it with more wood. And then that fabric, if it has very silty qualities where we could see that it will pump and incorporate more into the sand and perhaps clog the sand, we'll utilize that to keep separation. But not every portion of the street needs it, and it's not actually, was not planned and was not designed to be used under the entire street, but it is a tool that we had to utilize.
So therefore it was not utilized, correct?
It was not utilized.
Even though it was a recommendation by a contractor that was actually working on the street, that brought it up to you people, and you still didn't address it or put it in?
It was not.
Next item. When was Fifth Street switched over to a one-way?
That was changed.
Actually, that was brought by our resident, the option was to, with sidewalk going in, was gonna be lose parking on one side, or switch it to a one-way and keep parking on both sides. And we decided to give it a shot to pull it to the one-way, it can be switched back at any time with moving a couple signs, but we opted to try this one-way to see how it worked. And we realized that parking is important to people, and it was such a short thoroughfare going through there, that we went with that option.
Except when you're out there watching traffic. As far as coming around Third over to Fourth through Fifth Street, you have one stop sign, it increases all the street, the vehicles coming down the street. 'Cause it's more than just the residents that live on that street, it's all the looky-loos that come through. You can't control. Well, I'm just bringing it up.
Any other questions, sir?
I got one here, Rick Under, five twenty-three, Fourth Avenue Southeast. I just wanna make sure on the calculated assessments for the water connection and the sewer connection, that every homeowner got assessed the same? Same amount? Is that correct?
We should have, that's how they're bid. That's how they're supposed to be bid, is yours showing different?
I don't know, I mean, am I allowed to say what mine are?
Yeah, where it is.
Well, my water connection was seven eighty and my sewer connection was six fifty.
So on the slide, the actual bid prices were twelve hundred and it was supposed to be one thousand, plus there is a cost to it for the engineering portion of the project, legal and administrative fees that get dissolved from the entire project, that gets incorporated in there. So, yes, your water service charge that you should be seeing is seven eighty, and your sanitary service charge that you should be seeing is six fifty. The city will pay for fourteen thirty, so the other half is charged.
One other question, please.
Yeah.
Where does the sidewalk fit in here?
The sidewalk is one hundred percent paid by the city.
No, I had, I had reservations when this whole project started. Mother Nature played its part, we had some setbacks, but after, after things kinda cleared up and the workers were able to get out there, you know, at the end of it, you know, I'm, I'm glad that access went through, and I'm happy with the, with the work that the Elcor did and how the city handled it, and, you know, I'm, I'm pretty happy about that. So I have to say it was, it was a, it was a good, it was a good learning lesson for other homeowners that had this coming up. for other homeowners that had this coming up. And bottom line, it's, I'm, I was happy with it.
Like Bill said earlier, we'll pass that on to the contractors too.
And every concern that I had, either Bill addressed it or.
Sean.
Sean. So thank you very much. You guys took care of that word for us. So I thank you for that. Made things a lot easier.
Questions or concerns? There you go.
Ken Munson, four twenty-one fourth. Um, Carla, you had shown a slide earlier that the water connection was twelve hundred, one thousand two hundred, and the sewer connection was one thousand two hundred.
Correct.
How did we get to this seven eighty, six fifty?
Uh, yeah, that's what I just explained. Um, the actual bid prices, one half of it, the slide was incorrect. It was actually twelve hundred and one thousand. And then there's that engineering, legal and, um.
There's an in addition.
In addition, there's an upcharge to it. So the actual prices for your half of the water service is seven eighty and the sanitary service is six fifty.
I understood the figures you gave me. What I didn't catch from what you said earlier is that the engineering charge was in addition to that.
Anyone else out there have a question? Concerned about the project? Maybe even a compliment if you got one. Yes, Rose.
Rose, one, five thirty-one Fourth Avenue Southeast. I do have to compliment the Elcor people. They, they, they worked their butts off. They poured the cement. They got everything. And I even took out cookies two days in a row. And they, they just, they just went crazy over the cookies. And I said, you know, they, they really appreciated that. And I said, they, the main guy that was, the older guy, uh, walks with a limp and he had, um, he kept those guys, he kept an eye on those guys. And he, and he walked, when he was there by the truck and I had gotten one of the other guys and I had given him, um, the cookies. And he goes and he gets, it was like little, little lamps. They all followed him. And he said, where did you get those? That lady over there. But it was, they did, but the only complaint that I do have, and I tried calling, I tried calling Sean three times. I tried calling, uh, one of you guys. The part of the sidewalk that they took out. Our original sidewalk was flat.
You talked to one running to your house now?
Yes. When they put that part in again, we had an incline going up to the house and a decline going down. And, you know, if it gets icy, that's going to be a whopper. Yeah.
The only way you do is if you want way back further and make it.
Yeah, so like I said, if I have to, if I have to and I can't put any ice bike on the, the new sidewalk or the, and if it gets icy and I go out there and I shovel that, I don't want anybody telling me that I can't put a little sand out there.
Sand is just fine. Sand is perfectly.
Very fair. If you go down the shop, they'll give you a body on pedal sand.
Please do use sand.
Because I said, otherwise it, it's been, you know, as I said, the, those Elcor people, they have been, they were, they were nice to, you know, ask questions. I go out and have a question. They would, they would stop and they would answer, you know, take time to answer our questions and everything. No, they were a good group of people to, to work with.
You pass that on, they'll appreciate that.
They liked the cookies too.
Donna, we'll be here four twenty-two Third Avenue Southeast. Um, I'm wondering how the one layer of asphalt will hold during the winter.
Holds real well. The reason they do do that is so when there, if and when there is some settling or a problem by springtime before they put the vinyl on, you aren't going through wrecking the whole street. You just take that later off. And get that area to refix it better and put your good wood layer on top. That's, that's why they do it. They want to go through a winter like that to find out if there is a problem or not. We've always done this. It's done for years. Good question, but I mean, that's why it's settling.
Now, one other thing is that, uh, true. It's nice that the road went through. But it's not our local traffic that's on that road.
We're going to be getting sightseers. I guarantee you that for sure.
You're gonna, we've got people, I've had people tell me, well, we cut through your street just to get to the church.
So the first farm truck.
And it just.
Is it just today?
Did they really?
A semi, yeah, with a loaded.
Did they?
Yes.
We'll do travel that.
So and we've got, and another thing is, another thing is the speed. They're going through there too fast. And one, and I'm going to call him, I have to, I'll call Grissom's and, and give up my anonymous name or whatever. The little brown school bus. He whizzes through there like he's not, he's on a, he's on a piece of cardboard. I mean, you don't, you're going over there to get special needs kids to pick up and take to school. And we, there's four of them over there that I, that I know. And, but he, he's got to be more, he's got to come, he's got to knock it down a little bit on that speed.
Well, I've got to talk to Grissom. Thank you for pointing that out.
And the cars too. The cars and the trucks, they just, they don't seem to, you want to slow down.
That, that will be put to a stop.
And like I said, they, we've got three boys across the street. And they don't know, they don't have the common sense to stay out of the road. And I know the day that we had that snow, the tractor went by and he was, and he went by real slow along that snow because one of them came down on the, on their saucer and right out in front of, right out in the road. He went up, he turned around, he came back the other way and he came really, really slow because they do not, three times. These kids had their, their saucer sleds out in the road. Finally, the mother opens the door, tells him to go in the backyard. Well, I told, I, I, I can't, I can't, can't even watch those kids because they get into so much trouble. You know, they're going, they're going to get hurt one of these days.
So.
Uh, Jim, Dave Schmidt, five twelve. I'd like to echo what Rick said about Elcor. They did a great job. I was here, I visit with them sometimes, three times a day because I work out of my house. But, uh, in, in the future, when you're bidding a job, I know it's all about money, but they did a really nice job. They're very efficient. Other than Laysad, I wouldn't hire them. Laysad, those guys don't like doing that. But, um, those guys did a very nice job, very clean. They cleaned up almost every day. I've lived here for four years and I've watched these other projects since. You haven't been that fortunate with some of the recruits. I realize it's about dollars and pennies, but I have to believe they're so much easier to work with. I, like Steve said, I don't know if Skins is going to be around, but he, he was there every day between six and six fifteen waiting for the guys to show up. And they, they were all on task. And that means a lot when you're, you know, you're spending your own money or part of the money to watch. So I've already patted him on the back and I, I think I should have bought, I think it cost me more money in beer than it did in cookies place.
Hey, you're all bribing money, isn't it?
Nah, I just, hey, I had somebody to talk to. I didn't bother you.
Rick Under five twenty-three Fourth Avenue. Is there any way that we could maybe get a street sign with a speed limit? Are children at play? Um.
We have our signs up there.
And normally you don't residential, but what we probably do is have Stray Low check it and he can monitor for a bit and see what the actual speeds are. That being a dead end, it's very good chance that they aren't exceeding the thirty miles per hour in residential area. But it just seems because you're used to being a dead end there, that it might seem like they're going faster than they actually are. I'm not saying they are, but I think we should have Deputy Stray Low monitor it for a bit and see if there actually is an issue.
Well, I think the same way with the kids. I mean, they weren't used to that much traffic, so.
Used to the front of your house. Oh. Get hold of all the, talk to the landlord. Get him to notify everybody, keep trucks out of that too.
And if you guys, uh, it would help us too, if you see those trucks going down there, let us know. Most of them have a name on the side of it. Let us know so we can just contact them and let them know they can't do it. Because we certainly, we promised you guys in the beginning that that wouldn't be an issue and we'll do our best to prevent that.
It was just the first one I have seen.
That's fine, but soon as one goes, you know what happens then.
So if you can get a name or license plate or anything off the vehicles and let us know, we'll, we'll try and talk directly to the farmer or whoever's doing it, let them know that we can't do it.
All right, Heather. There you go.
Jimmy, I have three seventy Fifth Street. Since the road is lower than the curb, is there a different way you plow that?
Not really.
Just that, I mean, you really didn't plow way close to the curb?
Well, we're not, we didn't plow close to the curb because there's so many leaves in the gutter and stuff like that. And when that, on that road right now for this first year, we won't plow curb to curb like we normally. We'll, we'll be in a little bit because we don't want to beat up that cement too bad. So we stay not all the way to the curb on that first, for the first year. So.
Is it possible? How nerveless?
It might be a little nerve, but it ain't getting much. I mean, you only got a sixteen inch span on the cement there, but gets to the curb.
So we can't put salt or anything if that would recommend age it there or the stain?
Well, silt is not recommended on new concrete until it's reached a year of age.
One more. Have they made plans to clean up what's left of the leaves in the road now that they're snow covered or recupered? She goes, that's what says it right now. It's in part.
Got to be covered.
Three or four feet from the curb and, you know, if you get a snow emergency.
Since, since all you residents are here, uh, we can't help what Mother Nature deals with sometimes, which obviously this year taught us. Uh, we have full intentions of continuing with the leak program if the weather permits. He did go out today and started sucking some. It sucks really good in the bigger piles where there's some fluff underneath, but the top iced over. It just makes it hard if, uh, it's supposed to warm up this weekend. It's what Mother Nature allows us to do. If they're sucking, we will be back out and we will give it a try. But if not, our policy has always been, once we get to where we have to plow the streets off, that in snow stays, we're done. So unfortunately, some people I know are frustrated, but it takes him a long time to cover this town. Uh, we have a guy that does nothing but that for almost two months. Spends all day, every day in practice sucking leaves and it's a big expense for the city, but it's one that's very popular with the public, so we have continued with it. But it takes a while.
He does a hell of a good job. Well, thank you very much for addressing that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns before I close the public hearing? Now, before I close the public hearing, we need your written. Either give them to me or Bill, Joe, the one you want. And I have received one up front, so I also have one up here. Why don't you come up after where you can, which, uh. Close the public hearing. We're back to the regular meeting. I want to thank you all. I've come here today and I want to thank you all for voicing your concerns. The next, what we'll do now is council action will be to accept or deny a resolution adopting assessment for street utilities C I P improvements of two thousand nineteen. Do we have a motion? We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Once again, I thank you for all, all you for coming. You're all welcome to stay for the rest of the broadcast. Next public hearing. Annexation hearing, Porch of Second Avenue Southwest, B F W Memorial. City initiating the annexation to the Porch of Roadway in front of Future B F W Veterans Memorial Site, which is just, yeah, just over here, it's a block. The annexation was necessary to let the B F W could receive an access permit that are under the Second Avenue Southwest. As per the joint orderly annexation agreement with High Forest, they have or ready to sign a resolution for annexation at the next meeting to approve the annexation. Public hearing will be held on this. We're considering comments, objections to the annexation. Now, in the public hearing for annexation of Porch of Second Avenue Southwest, public hearing annexation notice. City of Sturple petitioning to annex certain territories in the township of High Forest as described. Pick up the description or you want me to read it? Don't read it. City of Sturple.
Who's here for that?
You won't catch it all anyhow.
I'll read it later.
Hold the public hearing at the Fire Hall, Porch Seventeen South Main on seven, or seven D M November twelfth, two thousand nineteen, considering the annexation request. Written or oral statements will be considered at this meeting. Have you received any written or oral statements?
We have none.
I have none here. Is anyone here like to speak to this annexation?
Full tabs are down. Count me in.
Do you want to talk about it?
Well, I'm serious about what you're split. It's S Y B A, right?
No, 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 no.
Or which one's this?
We're talking about annexation. We're annexation.
I want to go to the next one.
So do I.
Pass. This is going to be very lively.
Anyone with no written or order or no comments. Close the public hearing. We're back to the regular meeting. Okay, our next motion will be approve resolution two thousand nineteen, resolution between the City of Sturple and High Forest Township extending the corporate limits of the city. Do we have a motion? Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that will carry also. That moves us on to the one way way before a charitable gambling permit. General business, S Y B A gambling permit. Circle Youth Basketball Association is seeking approval to conduct gambling activity full tabs and down under Bar and Grill, one fifteen South Main Street. As per state statute, the city council must approve the license application prior to submitting through the sort of gambling control board. Now, I take it, we're still on board to do this. You still want to go?
We do.
Okay. You made all proper applications to the City's Bureau or what are we going to do? What we're going to do is approve it?
When, once you approve, something wrong?
Okay, we heard this last time. We heard what they want to do and the reasoning behind it. So I guess what the council action request tonight is to approve a resolution two thousand nineteen dash, resolution approving the Circle Youth Basketball Association request for a charitable gambling license at the down under Bar and Grill. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, that carries.
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead, Bernie.
Uh, just after last meeting, Van Social reached out to meet and meet and then the Fire Department only sent the board letter and they've been very gracious with us and I just wanted to make sure that that got out there. They're very reasonable and gracious and we're very appreciative.
Glad to hear that. I'm glad you guys worked it out. Best way to do it. Thank you all. Thank you for coming then.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our next one. Homestead County Roadway Maintenance Agreement. Now, you guys can stay for the whole rest of the tour.
We got a safety meeting.
Homestead County Maintenance Agreement. Task, please find the annual maintenance agreement submitted by Homestead County. This agreement covers the Porch of County Road one oh six, that will within the city limits. This agreement amount, three thousand four hundred and eight dollars, eight cents, hasn't changed from previous years. Public Works Director Hales recommended approval of this contract. Council action requested approval of the agreement is submitted by Homestead County.
I'll make a motion except.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. General business, library personnel request. Library Director Gray has recommended to the Personnel Committee that they have concurred promoting sewage from library aid to library associate, pay grade aid. Council action requested to approve the recommendation to home sewage to library associate. Motion? Second? Questions or discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. That takes us to twenty twenty elections. They're already here. Approval of election judges, designate polling places. As we gear up for the twenty twenty elections, we need to appoint our election judges for the presidential primary election to be held on March third. Primary election, excuse me, on March third. The other election dates you will want to be aware of are primary election on August the eleventh, and the general election is November third. We also need to formally designate our polling place as the Stereotown Civic Center. Two thousand twenty election judges are listed there. Council action requested, will we approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash, resolution approving election judges for twenty twenty elections. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. That takes us to a twenty twenty liquor license.
Can we designate polling place? There's two resolutions.
Oh, was there? I'm sorry. I missed that.
We need to make a, does he make the polling place?
Designate Stereotown Civic Center. Motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. City has received renewal applications for the polling liquor license applicants. Compliance check training will be held in Center twelve, Sheriff's Department is reviewing the applications this time. Two oh two Town Tap on sale Sunday, two AM, American Legion Club on sale Sunday, down under Bar, on sale, off sale, Sunday, two AM. Family Spirits and More off sale, U.S. Liquor off sale, River Agreed is on sale Sunday, two AM. Strikers on sale, off sale, Sunday, two AM. Quick Trip Stores, number four fourteen, number eight oh three, three point two off sale. Action is approve the twenty twenty liquor license applications as listed above, subject to proper application.
Do we have a motion?
Do we have a motion to approve from Jeremiah? Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. Mayor's staff assault reports. Mayor's report tonight. City would like to send their sympathy to the families of Arliss Breeze Duncan, Connie Link, Ruth Barsh, Alice Hackbarth, David Breeze, and Joe Sun. Happy birthday to Charles Mays. I want you all to get registered now for the ninth annual Thanksgiving Day K, five K, sponsored by Grace Church. We Care will be holding their one stop shop on Friday and Saturday, November twenty second, twenty third. We'd like to send our congratulations to the girls cross country team for placing ninth at state. And anybody who doesn't know it by now, the girls volleyball team placed first at the state again this year. Good for them, congratulations. Now, we had a wonderful, wonderful turnout for Memorial Day at the school, we had a big turnout for the BFW, or the American Legion. And as we mentioned, we did an annexation. We've got some really nice, anybody that's interested, cameraman. Flyers for anybody who wants to stop down at City Hall or something, maybe make a donation, or look at what the new BFW Memorial is held down. It's going to be a very nice, very nice stop for people to come through. That's all I've got for tonight. City administrators report?
Uh, shouldn't really be anything else to add. Uh, my report's in your packet, just second the mayor's motion. Our community is just so great when you see young and old respond to our veterans, and we got to see it this past weekend, so it's just great that you see that. Mix of our citizens honoring our vets the way they did, so. Good ceremonies at both places that we're at.
All right, thank you, Bill. Any questions for the administrator? Finance Director Carly, you got your report tonight?
Nope, I think I'm in.
Okay. What the worst gay question, Carly?
Maybe, maybe a joint question. Uh, the staff in the next week or two will be fine tuning what we feel will be our final budget proposal. Um, we haven't had any citizen negativity toward anything that was already proposed, and I guess if you have any other changes, um, let us know, otherwise we'll fine tune that and have that ready to go for your truth and taxation hearing on December third.
Okay.
Anything Carla also wants to let you know, we're going to do a finance meeting?
Oh, all right.
On the, on the fee schedule, just so it'll be a quick one before the November twenty sixth, twenty seventh. Twenty sixth, twenty sixth meeting, so if you just want to come in, huh?
You just need to finance the meeting, right?
Yes.
All right. Perfect, thank you, ladies. Public Works Sean, you got anything besides this fantastic report? You got quite a report.
Are you on vacation right now? Sure. And you're here.
I made him come in today.
Why would you want to do that?
There probably hasn't been many days that he hasn't taken phone calls or come in and to reach, so.
The only thing I wanted, we've covered the leaf, and that's a big thing right now. People are calling City Hall upset because they didn't get the leaves picked up, and he seriously is out every single day, all day long. That's all he does right now, when the weather permits, so.
You know, when people across the room, when she called me, too. First of all, you know.
I hope you told her last night.
I did, I straightened her out right there.
But a lot of people get worked up that, they're, break them off, they've been there for, but he can't cover the town. In a week, he can't cover the whole town because of so many leaves out there. So.
And I'd also like to say, I want personally, maybe for working out that arrangement with the neighbors up there on that dish where they put all the big colors on their dumb stuff. That is a nice, that really looks nice, you know? And for using, and working pretty hard on the amphitheater songs, we're doing a lot of work, even the guys out there, that's really shaping it up, too. You got to get out and look at some of their stuff, that's truly looking good, it's coming around fast. You guys, besides trying to get around stuff, you did a great job on all these, and these things around town, I'd be impressed, so.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else get anything for Sean? All right. City engineers report. Jenna, you got anything tonight?
Well, um, we're wrapping up this year's, so that's one of the reasons why we're here tonight. Um, for next year's CIP project, um, we will have our first utility vending next week, um, with, uh, private utility companies to let them know what's going on. Um, and areas they should be aware of, what they should plan for. And then we would like to schedule our neighborhood meeting, um, to go through preliminary design with the next year's public. Doing it a little earlier in design to get more input before we get too far along. Um, and so that will be scheduled for December fifth.
What's going on there first week of December? All right. So what do you got, Jenna?
That is what I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Jenna? All right, library director tonight? Fire chief tonight? Community Commission Board reports, Chamber of Commerce, Al, you got anything?
Just, uh, winter fest around the corner.
Oh, God, that's right, that's that first week, too.
Three weeks, oh, yeah.
All right, EDA, HRA, you got Minnesota October fifteenth, there you are. Finance, we're going to be having a meeting coming up. Right?
Right, November twenty sixth.
Library?
It's my birthday, I skipped the meeting that night.
It's Brad's birthday.
Congratulations.
Skipped, skipped the council meeting, because I don't, I only have birthdays once a year, it's not good.
It's good.
So we go for it.
Let's have a big Yeti cup here, just ignore it.
So we should bring cake?
Yeah, no, we should bring cake.
He's full tabs, too, he's really sober. All right, library?
Uh, we'll be next week.
Next week? Park Board, Park Board, just second, Jeremiah. The Stereotown Community Foundation donated fifty thousand dollars to the Stereotown Park Board to put towards the amphitheater. Thank you very much, Stereotown Community Foundation.
Josh, sure. They spelled my name wrong, I don't know.
Jeremiah, Park Board? You got any, anything else from Park Board?
Uh, Park Board, um, normally would have met yesterday, but since it was about room stay, they moved down, so technically, so.
All right, maybe next week. Personnel, nothing right now. D and Z? Brian's on it?
Uh, we have, we...
You had a great meeting, yeah, you had a great turnout for your meeting. You had a very turnout for your...
I had thirty-two pages of notes.
How many did we have? Everybody keep track, I'm going to show them.
Um, twenty-three resident speakers. Oh, and then how many showed up over on that?
We'll probably have a supplemental packet, less smaller, of just some additional comments that did come in, so we'll get those to you before.
All right, great, nothing else, well, you got one December, you got the, ready? Public Safety, Mike's not here. Public Works? Brady?
Uh, minutes in your packet. Uh, basically, the big thing there is, they've been talking about reorganization of how they, um, hopefully, as the mayor and I have offered our input, either keeping or enunciating, uh, a regional, um, what would you call it, atmosphere theme?
Yeah, trying to go ahead and regional growth.
That take cares of, takes care of all of us in the surrounding region as well, immediate.
I'm going to try to get to that beginning tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
Because they didn't get all, not to my opinion, they... Roll card?
Uh, mainly they're going over the, uh, long range, um, of book plans, so that continues, and then there's quite a bit of discussion on, uh, one oh four and fourteen, that whole intersection there, so.
Still one eighty. No problem right now. Trans Advisory Committee, no report. Communications, we've got, uh, the Freckle Correspondence in there, if you haven't read it yet or seen it, you can take a look through there. Jim, uh, keep track, because we found that in town, I got to get them correctly out. Let us know what's going on. Open mic, open mic policy here. City Council encourages and welcomes participation from all community members. Please keep in mind that the conference must be permanent city business, and it must adhere to the data privacy rules. No employee's name may be used. Please and I expect action from the council this evening, we bear your concerns. We also request the conference to be limited to four minutes. Speakers we recognize only once. At this time, we ask that anyone who would like to address city council, please step up, state your name and address.
Hi, well, my name's Patrick Dunne, uh, three oh four Lake Shore Drive. I really came to have a private word with the city engineer and public works director after the meeting, but I'll take the opportunity to do it right now. I have, uh, I'm in the zone right across from Florence Park, it's going to be, uh, under construction next year. I've got two questions. One is, um, uh, I want to raise the issue of trying to get a wider curb cut for my driveway. My driveway is two vehicles wide, but the curb cut just barely, you can get one vehicle through, and it's, I just bought the house two years ago. It's created some problems, especially in the winter with low plastic bumpers hitting, if you don't get right in perpendicular, you're coming at an angle at all. The way on the rise on each side, um, it has some body damage on the vehicle of a visitor. The second issue I have is regarding, um, the snow removal ordinance. Uh, I'm on one of the properties that there is no boulevard between my sidewalk and the street. And I'm curious, I know what the ordinance is, I've tried to be vigilant the last two winters of keeping my sidewalks clear, we do get pedestrians through there. But with no buffer or boulevard to catch the snow, it's, uh, every time the plow truck comes by, all the snow goes from the street back up into the sidewalk. I've tried to relieve the problem to some extent by every time I shovel, no, no snow blowing here, shovel out the dri, uh, sidewalk, putting it up in my yard so that it's not going back out into the street to get pushed back up. But it's just a never-ending battle every time we have the snowstorm that I'm out there three, four, five times clearing the sidewalk of freshly plowed up snow. If, uh, and I don't, don't know that there's a clear answer to either of those, but if either of you could respond to that on the record rather than private, thank you.
Sure. Um, on the record, your driveway, I'm looking at it right now, um, the portion of it in right of way, we can widen with the project. Um, to match, you're going to have to do some widening on your own private property.
I can hear that, I've got a sign contract you want to talk to about.
Okay, so, yeah, and I will, I actually wrote it down right here, um, to, would you just want to match the width of the proportion closest to your garage?
Yeah, like, I looked at my next door neighbor's driveway, um, and they've got a double wide driveway like mine, and the curb cut is, it's just straight all the way out. Mine bottlenecked out at the street, it must have been single in years past.
Yep, um, so when we come in and replace the curb and replace the sidewalk, um, we can pour that curb cut up to twenty-four feet wide. Um, so we'll put that in the plans to widen it, um, also at the neighborhood meeting, uh, December fifth, you know about it for all your neighbors.
Okay.
Uh, you can come and we'll have printouts and stuff, and making notes on there, and that goes to all the design staff that this is what's preferred in that area. Um, in regards to creating a boulevard, um, for in between the sidewalk and the roadway, we don't have enough right of way.
I didn't necessarily expect that to be a solution. I, I was curious more about what the city's expect, and I haven't gotten any ticket ordinance violation, but that's been out of my mind, I try to keep it clear, but, uh, it's a battle I can't win of keeping it clear against me versus the father.
We encourage people to do it, uh, and it's based on a complaint basis, so neighbors aren't complaining a lot of things. We aren't going around necessarily monitoring the sidewalks nonstop and sending out notifications to people, so neighbors don't complain, a lot of areas they, they end up not getting.
I was curious more so if the, and maybe the city doesn't have any different kind of expectation, but I was curious if the city's interpretation of the ordinance or execution of compliance with ordinance was somehow different for people like me who don't have the benefit of the boulevard as a buffer at a quick moment?
You know, it's, we talked about this every year and, and...
It's come, it's come up before.
In the older section of town, there's a lot of that, so, um, usually if you just talk to your neighbors, and, and they're probably all in the same, the same spot, um, they can't keep it clear either. Um, if you make an effort in the beginning, and then once we get snow, there's snowstorm, we, people usually are really understanding, so.
And again, if we haven't forced it on you in any yet.
Yeah.
Again, we appreciate the fact we can do the best we can.
Give you great credit for trying.
Yeah.
Because there are certain people out there that just don't, people aren't complaining, it's not getting where it's at.
Does everyone on your block keep it plowed off, or is just you?
I'm sorry, what?
Does everyone up and down both sides of you keep it cleared out, or is just you mainly keeping it?
Well, yeah, I see that, too. Um, my neighborhood's pretty good about voluntary compliance of keeping it clear. Um, I, occasionally I see, like, not all winter, but maybe more than the twenty-four hours, a couple days, tell it clear. Um, but, but it, um, just about all of that stretch of Lake Shore Drive, there is a several foot buffer of grass that, that does prevent all that snow, snow plow, s- snow coming up. It's just mine and then the last corner house, there are the only two where, and there's a bend in the road there, that's where the boulevard gets eliminated, and it's, uh, cement sidewalk right up to the curb.
Oh, yours is right to the curb, yours is right up to the curb, right, that's it?
And that's the nature of the problem, is, um, there, there's just nowhere there for the plow to put the snow except in my sidewalk.
No, I know exactly what you're talking about.
I put it into my yard.
If you've got an eight foot boulevard, it gets, sometimes gets, like last one, or snow after snow, eventually they got to keep pushing it up, and it gets rolling over there.
Yeah, we really appreciate what you do, but...
Yeah, I was curious, and I, I don't expect, expect, and I'm not asking you to change the ordinance, but I was just curious if as a pr- and I didn't know if there were other, uh, residents around town who had that same situation.
Several, there are, actually up on, up there by Russ Hayes and all that, that's all, Daniels' old place, that gets...
I was just curious more so as a practical matter, how the city, if we got treated any differently as far as, like, a warning or...
No, we'll find you all the same when you're...
And I, I'll send you a letter first, you know, usually when the people call and I recognize where the address is, you know, we talk about that, and, you know, if they're not aware of what it is, then that kind of slows the complaint down a little bit, too, so, yeah, and you'll get a letter from me, just call me and we'll, we're not going to, we're not going to find you.
In doing the designs for the project going forward for next year and stuff, we look at that when we have such narrow road right of ways there, because there's not a whole lot of, sometimes when we do these older parts of town, you're at the mercy of what was done a hundred years ago, setting things up. And we got to do our best, so sidewalks are kind of an integral part that we want to continue with. Uh, so unfortunately, some of those, we just don't have the width to give that separation.
Yours is a pretty heavily used sidewalk, is it lead break from the school or something or anything, or is it...
Not really, um, and actually, we get a lot of pedestrian traffic through there, but because the Florence Park parking lot is immediately across the street from me, um, even if people are on the sidewalk, they'll cut into the street and over into the park, so there's very few people.
Yeah.
And, and so I'm really out there fighting it for compliance with ordinance more so than the pedestrian.
Don't tell anybody I told them.
Thank you for the comments, I appreciate that, sorry for going on.
Hey, mark down December fifth, like, ju- December fifth, right, Jenna?
Yep.
That's what we, if you think of something else you'd like to ask or something, come back that night.
That other question you had about the grade or the slope of your driveway apron, one of the things the engineers are going to do on this project, because we've had pretty good success, they do look at how to find... they do look at how the final street grade goes in, and how that boulevard grade goes in, and I'll bet, what, ninety-nine percent of the time, if not a hundred, we're able to get that to be a little bit smoother, and hopefully eliminate a good share of maybe what, somewhere around.
I realize there needs to be that rise on each side of the curb cut, but, uh, and it's just, the, the flat before you hit the curb cut, it's like literally single passenger vehicle perpendicular in. And when a car, and it's hard to get in perpendicular, it's easier to kind of sweep in at a forty-five degree, and then with modern vehicles with the big plastic bumpers down low up front, it, if it hits that, um, that far passenger side going in.
Just wide would take care of it, probably.
Exactly, yeah, that's not a grading issue, I don't think so much as a, um, widening where the cuts are.
He has an older style with the rounded cuts, not a flare that we do now, so if you drive and look at some of our old, our, for recent projects, you'll see how it's different.
We had about thirty-five hundred dollars in body damage for a very minor, what seemed like a very minor hit on the curb pulling in last winter, that thirty-five hundred dollars later had the body shot, it was, um, um, I want to take the opportunity during the road construction, if it can be widened, especially since the rest of the driveway is pretty much ready to receive a wider entry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got, do you have a question? Uh, Loney, three sixteen East Street, uh, about the gambling and this pull tabs, are you anybody that organizations coming in and possibly taking more spots from the Fire Department, let's say of strikers, or, I'm not saying they're going to do this, I'm just asking, I guess, in lieu of another organization comes in and possibly wants pull tabs, and then they bounce the Fire Department out or something like that, is that a concern at all?
We don't got to answer your questions. This, this open mic, we.
Okay, well, that's, I just, that's a.
They worked out an agreement between them.
Okay.
The Fire Department itself, and that's true, it's a down agreement.
And we are meaning to, to discuss maybe a policy, so.
Right. I guess it's just more of a preference set now, right? So, I just, just curious. Don't think it'd be a problem.
I don't think, I don't foresee it being any problem, everything comes back to the community.
Yeah.
So, right now, we're looking for Craig's favorite motion of the night.
Yep.
I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Regard. Thank you all for coming, thank.